Okay, our call this meeting to order. This is the Waldaburro Select Board, Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, 6:10 in the evening. Would we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can we just make a quick announcement that we're working on our live streaming because we promised we would be. Max is working on it, and as soon as it's up, we will let you know.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on our franchise agreement or proposed franchise agreement with Spectrum. And is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is open. Is there any public comment about? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I was sent something yesterday stating that the Chapel Road was involved in the new franchise agreement.
Correct.
But it said October 31st, and as residents, we've been told May 1st.
So, this was a recommendation, if you recall, at the last meeting we had. We talked about that, of when it would be put in. When we met with the attorney, she said that we should give them up until October 31st.
Actually, I think we gave them until December 31st.
No.
Was it October 31st?
No, May 31st. So, May 31st, I was told, is the date that they're aiming for, but they're dependent on make-ready.
And now we have this new incident that's happened.
Right.
So, they're dependent on make-ready, and that's, therein lies the problem. If they can't get make-ready done before that time, we can't hold their feet to the fire. I was told that even prior to us signing this, that they have made it a priority and already applied for their make-ready. So hopefully, it will be by May 31st. I don't know what now this does.
They are working outdoors, so it should be easier for them to deal with the coronavirus that we're dealing with, COVID-19, because they're, they're in the open air. It shouldn't be as much of an issue for them to get out to where the work is. The other point is that there should be very little make-ready on Chapel Road. You don't have any other users on those poles, other than the electric company. So, that shouldn't be an issue either. And we've also built into the renewal agreement that they are not in compliance with the existing agreement if they don't complete Chapel Road.
Well, actually, when I read it, there was a clause in there that said that you can't, you pretty much can't hold their feet to the fire. The clause, I can read it to you, states that extenuating circumstances or whatever. So how much, how long are we going to be put off?
Well.
I literally, I mean, I get Julie is always saying you have your phone. I get a signal if I am in my bedroom with my arm out my window. That is the only signal that I get.
Yep.
I have a doctor's appointment on Wednesday via the phone. I'm not quite sure what I'm going to do yet. The libraries are closed.
They are.
We, you can come here and park, we do have, if you pull right into this spot back here, you get excellent reception. Feel free to do that anytime. Again, this was, when, the problem is, is that they are dependent on the make-ready. So they're dependent on CMP. So if CMP doesn't do what they need to do, they can't do what they need to do, and we need to give them a reasonable amount of time.
What is make-ready? Because somebody's already done something on the poles.
When they move the wires, to accommodate other wires. That's my understanding of what make-ready is.
That's what I did. Yeah. And as I said, there really shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue.
I was told there was somebody out there this week, but I, I don't know, I can't confirm that, because by the time I got the phone call and got up there, nobody was there.
I drove it over the weekend just to see, and I didn't see any, anything going on.
Well, I was told this.
But that was on the weekend.
My weeks are running together.
Yeah, they are.
It was last week.
Yeah.
So that's make-ready.
I guess my thing is that we couldn't hold them to it before.
Well, we can hold it, pull them to it now, because their failure to complete by a date certain, a date certain, puts them in default.
And what would happen if they're in default?
That was in no other agreement that we have the ability to enforce. Didn't we have that before?
Because this is exempting, before their argument was, we have so many, we have to meet so many homes. This is actually in there about chapel, so they can't even use that as an argument. We've made it part of the agreement.
Any other questions, Kayla?
I just got back. I was supposed to fly to Houston for a functional analysis test, and that's trying to VPN it. It is pretty much a big failure. So it, you know, it's highlighting that it's really not so much a luxury item anymore that we're really, it makes it incredibly difficult to do my job, you know? So it's pretty, pretty frustrating, pretty frustrating stuff that we're still here.
The neighbor across from us is trying to go to college right now, and she can't go to the library. And that's how she has to be able to graduate, is to take her college classes.
The library, Wi-Fi isn't.
The Wi-Fi should be.
Their internet is, you just have to park in the parking lot, park there in the library, and you get your internet there.
Is the password public?
Yes. Read books.
Okay.
I've used that for years. That's where I got my internet for years.
A little tough to do your college classes.
And it's, it's very fast.
You do, you have to do.
Because it's on fiber optic. They've got the fastest internet in town.
And if you do need it for like your doctor's appointment, if you just call us and let us know on Wednesday, you can just come sit right in here. It's, you know, actually in the building. We won't make you sit in your car.
Just please call us.
Just call, so that way we'll know to open the doors.
Can you repeat what the password was again?
Read books.
Read capital R, all one word.
I don't think it really makes any difference.
Are you online now? Are we live?
I'm getting updates on the live stream until I can actually get that.
Look at you go! He's great. Awesome.
Did you have more you wanted to say?
Not about this. I'm actually here for number five. I have something else.
Okay. So there, are there any more public comments about the franchise agreement with Spectrum? Any comments from the board?
I'm glad we're getting it done.
Yeah. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Shall we act on the franchise agreement with Spectrum? Is there a motion to accept, to propose and accept the franchise agreement that Spectrum has indicated it is willing to accept?
So moved.
I believe it's, it wasn't one of the packages. I don't think it's in this one.
Yes, and I have copies here. This just included the, we added the language we wanted, and the attorney reviewed it and approved it.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, we got that one done. Let's keep our business going. Presentation, and this is Julie, update on Town of Waldaburro.
And do you want to move Paul up there, so he can go to his room?
I have no problem with that. Paul, would you like to go next? Yes, please.
Your quarterly report.
Thank you for coming today.
Absolutely. Wasn't sure if I'd be here talking to a laptop or what was going to be going on. I want to thank the other folks at One Head. I was supposed to do this a couple times, but my schedule didn't allow, so other department heads were willing to move around to accommodate me, and I appreciate that, so. So far, in this fiscal year, our, we don't go on the calendar, we run on the same fiscal year as the rest of the town. So during this fiscal year, so far, we've responded to 194 emergency calls. We had 215 last year, and we're at 194 so far this year. So we are getting busier as time, time goes on. We currently have 25 firefighters on our roster. I claim to be one of the luckiest fire chiefs in the area. Not only do we have 25 folks on the roster, but we have 25 active folks on the roster.
Is that high or low?
That's very high. And the fact that they show up is the best part. A lot of folks may have more people on their roster, but they don't have the, a lot of times have the turnout that we're fortunate enough to have here. Very pleased that we had two new folks join us since February 1st, and we're very excited about them. They're enthusiastic, and we've also, within the last two weeks, heard from two folks that were on before but had to get done for work, or family, or for whatever reasons. And they want to come back, so we're anxiously looking forward to welcoming them home and come back, so. We train on the first two Wednesdays of the month. The third Wednesday, we have officers meeting, and the fourth Wednesday, we do our truck checks. Now, in this COVID-19 that we find us all in, we've modified it some, and there's five firefighters over there tonight doing truck checks. Five did them last night, and five each night for the rest of the week to get them all done. So we've been doing our part to adhere to the recommendations of our health officials and, but still get our jobs done. And training, we're going to do the same thing. We're going to train in smaller groups, but we're going to continue to train until things come back to normal, so. Plug away. Just prior to this current pandemic starting, I successfully completed a fire inspection course at the National Fire Academy in Maryland. And I want to thank Stan Walts, who was a big help to me, being able to successfully complete that down there. I get called on quite frequently to do safety inspections here around town for businesses or for residences, and I do it mainly on common sense and the knowledge that I have. And so I was very excited when I got accepted into this course and this program, and really have a much better understanding. And Stan was great in helping me get through that. Our ladder truck has been in service for several months, and we are very thrilled with the way that it is, is working out. The model that we went with, I couldn't be more pleased with. The maneuverability for that truck to get in and out of tight places is remarkable. We haven't been anywhere, we haven't been able to set the truck yet, so we're very pleased with that. Other than power lines, of course, the obvious things. But as far as distances, road widths, driveway widths, we've had no problems. So we're very, very excited with, with how that's working out. Most of the equipment's been purchased and is on it. We still have some. I'm waiting until our next fiscal year to get the rest of it. Things we had to have, we got, so that it would function. But some other things, we're waiting until next year to get. We currently have 22 SCBAs, the air packs that people breathe air in. And the reason I bring that up is we've been able to replace 10 units. We purchased five units, and thanks to our wonderful Max, he helped us with a grant. He got us $25,000 from the Stephen and Tabitha King Charitable Foundation, which we were able to purchase another five. And we continue to look for grants, and we continue to apply for them, and I just can't say enough good about Max. He just does a fantastic job and a big help. So we still have 12 units to replace, to get us all up to speed, and we'll hopefully do that with grants. If not, we'll do it through future budgets, so.
What's the use for life of those, Paul?
They change the things every 10 years. Some of ours are 20 to 30 years old, so, you know, we're working them around. We take care of our stuff, and we.
What's the NFPA regon replacement?
Yeah, about every 15 years, that it be turned over, so. So we are working at it.
We make things last a lot longer.
Sure do. Speaking of making things last longer, all of our trucks now have been out for their annual pump service and engine service. And like I shared with you in the budget meetings last year and this year, the cost of maintenance is what's going up. That's the only thing that went up in the fire department's budget this year. I did overspend on that line item. We had a lot of things that we'd been putting off, but got to the point where we just didn't feel it was safe to put them off anymore, and so I took care of them, and.
He didn't overexpend his budget, though, just that line item?
My budget, just that line item. So, and we'll accommodate for it in other, other places, so. All the trucks are running great, and operating, operating very well, so. And the last thing I want to share with you folks is, this September, as hopefully you all know and remember, is we'll be hosting the 2020 Maine State Federation of Firefighters Convention here in town, where every fire department in the state of Maine is invited to come and see Waldaburro. And the plans are coming together great. It's a three-day event, and I'll just give you a brief schedule to close up here tonight. Friday, the 11th.
Which month?
September.
September, thanks.
Yep. We'll start out by judging the antique apparatus. And before I start on this, I also want to thank all the department heads here in town in preparing for this. We've only had conversations, and all of them have been willing to step up and to help and be very supportive. The girls in the front office and Julie have been wonderful as far as helping us, you know, figure out how we're going to do registrations and things, and so everybody's been just terrific on this, so. But that will be September 11th, so we decided that we're going to have the memorial service, the annual memorial service. We're going to have it that night. That'll be here in the fire station. Then their annual membership meeting will be in this room following that memorial service. On Saturday is the big day. That's the day that we'll have the parade. We're hoping to have the route be the same as it was in 2013 for our celebration. Dale Smith's our chairman of that. He's working on getting that done.
I'm from Sylvanion.
Right, from Sylvanion, up through town. We like that route because it's relatively flat. If you look around Waldaburro, there's not too many flat parade routes, but with antique fire trucks, it's good to have it as flat as we can get it. So that's what we're hoping to work out. Kyle Santisson is our chairman in charge of the exhibits, and that's going to be at Miller School. We secured the school there, so there'll be new fire trucks on display, new fire gear, all of the distributors will be there, and all be set up over there for folks to come and see.
Max is going to have a little booth to rate grants for all these towns?
No, Max is all of us. We're not sharing.
To work on laptops.
Yeah. The only thing that we couldn't hold in the Town of Waldaburro was our banquet. Trust me, Julie and I racked our brains. There was no place that was large enough to feed 350 people that also was able to have a liquor license for the evening. So the banquet is going to be at the Elks Lodge in Rockland, which is actually going to work out fine, because that's where all the hotel rooms are. So it'll, everything will be in Waldaburro except for that, that one event. And then we'll close on Sunday, the 13th. We're going to have a firefighters muster, and, which is an annual event, and the exhibits will be going on that day as well, so. We're very excited about it, and we're looking forward to hosting everybody and showing them.
Where is that going to happen?
The muster.
Yep.
We're not quite sure where it's going to be. It'll either be at Foster Field, perhaps the Rec Field, right next to Miller School. I want them close to Miller School, because the exhibits will be there, and the folks can go back and forth from there, so. We'll be working with Marcus and the other folks.
Are you going to have enough accommodation for these guys?
Yeah, over in Rockland, we were lucky that we had three hotels that signed on with a special rate for everyone.
Okay.
Over there, so we were very pleased with that.
I was just going to suggest that some residents might be willing to put some people up for the weekend if you need it.
Yeah, I think that they'll be, I think they'll be sufficiently fine over there, so. So any questions?
We have the best Elks Lodges in the state, but anyway. I was kind of curious about the, what's the average age of the firefighters?
Well, Dick Litten kind of throws a, kind of skews our.
So true.
Kind of skews it off a little bit, but, no, I would say that, I haven't actually figured it out, but they're probably in their high twenties, mid thirties, probably.
Wow, that young, I'm surprised.
Yeah.
We have a really good group of young men.
Yeah. And women.
And women, yes, and women.
And women.
And men and women. We really do.
That's cool.
They're amazing.
Yeah, and this current pandemic's been tough on us, because we're very, I mean, outside our families, this is our other family, and you go by here, and you'll see their trucks and cars parked out all the time, you know? On the way home from work, they're here, and to have to separate them out and tell them not to come, been kind of tough on us, so. You know, we, usually training gets done at eight, nine o'clock at night, but it's nothing for us to still be here at 10:30. So, you know, it's a, it's a great group, and, you know, I said I'm the luckiest fire chief, but I'm just, I'm really honored. They're a great group to lead, and we're very proud of our town, and that's why we're anxious. We're one of the first small towns to ever host this convention. Usually it's in a much larger city. The hardest hurdle was convincing them that we did have hotel rooms. We're just a mile over the, the limit that they normally want, but we bid for it, and we convinced them that we would do a good job, and so we're very anxious to have them here, so.
Great job.
And the business associations giving me a whole box of pamphlets. I was going to be going to conventions. Right now, I'm supposed to be at Sunday River, but everything's been canceled, but to really promote our town while we're, while we're doing this, so.
Good job.
Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
And I thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it.
We can do that now. It's, it is in one of the leaders. Can we make an adjustment to appoint Paul now as the Deputy EMA Director? It's 10.2.
10, so what we discovered was that Paul has never been officially appointed as our Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Did I say one more?
Because this town has no idea how lucky they are to have Kyle Santisson in that position. This is a horrible thing that we're going through. I mean, it's life-changing for all of us, and the Town of Waldaburro has been so well-prepared for this, and I give all the credit to Kyle. We all step up, support him, and we'll do what he, you know, what he asks of us, but we are really in good, good hands, and so I just wanted to give him that credit. He definitely deserves it, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
He's already written down the numbers for the grant money we're hoping to get once this thing's over.
Stop and see Jody tomorrow, and she'll swear at you.
Now it's your turn, Julie.
Now it's my turn.
Update on Town of Waldaburro COVID-19 response.
So, as, as you know, we are in uncharted territory here, but just to echo what Paul said, we are very blessed to have Kyle as our EMA Director. Not only him, but all of our department heads. I mean, you know, this is something Kyle and I speak every day about this. We've had meetings about this. Currently, and I was very proud of this. We, up until today, were the only town that was still functional, fully functional, in the office. We put up our sneeze guards, we had extra cleaning come in, we were following all CDC recommendations, and I think that was really important for our residents, and I'm going to explain why. It's not a just, in Waldaburro, it's not just about paying taxes and registering vehicles. We provide really important services to people, including assistance. And once the schools closed and people had to stay home and take care of their children, it's affected our neighbors in various ways, and, and some of it's economic. And, and we've seen an uptick, a significant uptick, not so much as people coming in and needing help right now, but fear of the future. True fear of what happens next. And having somebody here to talk to them, even if, whether it be in person or on the phone, we were thanked profusely for being able to provide the information and to offer that, yes, in the end, there'll be something. And I, I have to stress, I could not be more proud of how all of my employees have handled this entire situation and their willingness to help. I have employees who obviously are not as busy as they normally are on buses, helping deliver food, because we're delivering food to people who need it, for the kids. So aside from our emergency services, who every day are frontline workers and risk their lives every day, they, they're still doing it, and they're doing it willingly. And they're, they've just been incredible. Some of the measures we've taken is we've, we've increased cleaning to every day with our service. We clean in between customers, and even at the transfer station, what we've done up there is, we've had to discontinue a couple of things. We're not helping the haulers empty. We're not helping, if you're able-bodied, we are not. If you need assistance, we ask you to remain in your car, we'll help you. That is an essential service, the transfer station, and keeping that open is paramount, because we don't want people to keep garbage, because that breeds other issues. So, you know, you don't think about it on a daily basis, because it goes away, but if it didn't go away, then you would think about it. So we're really trying very hard to provide all the services that we've provided. It's tough in the office, though, when you have that face-to-face. We are following the governor's latest, well, I guess, those were suggestions last week, and she made them an executive order today. So what we will be doing from here on out is, we will remain open from the pub, to the public by appointment and by phone from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. If you, if you need something, call, and we'll make an arrangement for you to come in, because there are certain services that, especially with assistance, you have to be present for, and there's going to have to be an exchange of information. So we are available for that. There's a lot of things you can still do by the mail that we will do. We do have the Santa box out front, which you would not believe how much that has been used. And the newspapers did a really good job of making sure people were aware that it's not just there for fun. But it was so nice of Santa to let us use that box off-season. He's a really good guy, that Santa. So that's pretty much been our, our goal, is to, it's such a balance. And I'm going to tell you that as a person who has to make these decisions, and, and we sat in a group and really had really good thoughtful discussion. None of these decisions are, are entered into lightly, and we certainly take the health and welfare of our residents and our employees very seriously. But we're at a point now where we're really starting to see the economic impact of this hit our, our town. Our clam flats are not closed, but the market's not there. The same thing with the lobsters. And one of the proudest moments I had in this entire couple of weeks was last Thursday night, and that was the Shellfish Committee meeting, where the Shellfish Committee had an emergency meeting to meet and discuss about what can we do. So proud of the effort that was put in. We had four clambers come to the meeting. We were under the 10. We made it under the 10 limit, but what they did is, we have grant money for reseeding. We're doing another reseeding project that will help our licensed shellfish harvesters on Monday. We're going to be reseeding Flanders Cove, and we also are building an upweller, which will help the river hopefully seed, reseed and seed, and do all kinds of great things, so. But it was just great to see the urgency and the commitment to, you know, our largest employer, which many people make their living off of the Madomic. It was just nice to see that immediate response by the Shellfish Committee, so I was very much encouraged by that.
Julie, can you just repeat what the town is doing because of the executive order today?
We are remaining open to the public by appointment and by phone. If you need us, call us, and we can set up an appointment if it's something that you need to do in person.
And the hours are nine in the morning?
Nine in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon. Monday through Friday.
Nine through three, Monday through Friday, okay.
So, and just to make very clear, police, fire, and EMS are 24/7. So, I just don't want anybody to get in.
Still 24/7.
Are still, as always, 24/7. But that's, I mean, you know, it's very, it's a very difficult thing, and people are panicking, and they're scared. And I, I like to think that when we answer that phone, that we're doing a great public service, because we have that information that I sent out to all of you when we posted has been. because we have that information that I sent out to all of you when we posted has been very helpful. I just have to do it because I have to plug it, but this is what the community navigator would be doing at this point in time. So once we have that position, there's just so many things. And I did learn one thing, too, that after this is all over, there is some resources that we really should have to talk about, especially for our fishermen and our other small businesses in this town that you just don't realize. A lot of times they're making decisions and sometimes they're financial decisions that they don't even realize they're making. And there is an organization that will come down, hold meetings in this building to help different segments on what they should be doing financially and helping them navigate. And especially after this, navigate through all these things that are happening. Today, I got two calls about the small business loans through the state government that Governor Mills has put out there. And honestly, I don't know enough about it to speak intelligently. But luckily, I knew who to call and who to send them to, so that was really useful. So that stuff's invaluable. So that's, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to make a couple more comments, if you don't mind. People probably know this already, but Hanaford's announced on the 19th of this month that it is shortening its store hours from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily and that it's setting aside a dedicated hour for seniors.
Bob, pull that thought, I can actually go live now.
Okay. They are setting a dedicated hour for seniors from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. on Tuesdays through Thursdays. So that's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And that's important because seniors are the most vulnerable section of our population. And setting aside that hour for them to isolate, if you will, among themselves is better than exposing them to people who walk in at all hours of the day. And I just heard this afternoon that Portland has issued a stay-at-home order. Southern Maine is born the brunt of this thing in Maine. There are still counties in Maine that don't have any reported cases at all. But the brunt of them are down south in Portland and the county south of Portland. So they want people to stay at home, to arrest the spread of the virus and keep it from coming north. And I believe we still only have one case in Waldeboro and I believe that's contained. Is Katie still on the line?
Oh, not.
Okay. That's right. Okay, well, she's self-isolating. And it's important to know that. She doesn't mind telling people that. And if she were here now, she'd tell you why she's doing it. She had an inadvertent contact with somebody who has the virus. She found out within a day that she could have been exposed to it and she's staying at home. She's not coming out or meeting with anybody. And I put this package on the front of her step in front of her door, the satchel, and then waved at it from my truck, from a safe distance. So it's real, it's here. And if we're all sensible and stay, keep that distance and be sensitive to the symptoms, if we have symptoms, be sensitive to them. Don't go to the hospital, call your doctor. Don't want to overload the hospital and talk to your doctor about what you should do. It may not even be the virus. I had a call from someone the other day who has a sore throat. It's not the virus. They're not infected. But they did call their doctor and they're figuring out what to do and staying home. So I think what we're doing here is really very, very reasonable. Keeping people out of the office so our people aren't exposed, but still making the services available in the best way that we possibly can. And did you say earlier that if they have to renew licenses, they have a 30-day period?
Well, B M V is closed. So what they've put out, and the state police put it out, B M V put it out, that registrations and things that you would typically do at the B M V, you are now, 30 days after this is over, they're going to give you, and that change, depending how long it lasts, but that's the guidance that we got from the B M V.
So you don't need to renew your license, you have 30 days grace period?
I don't know about the license, I didn't read about the license. I'm talking about registrations.
Registration, sorry.
I'm not going to comment on stuff I'm not sure about.
Fair enough. I'm getting mixed up between license plates and driver's licenses here, so. And then, yeah, non-essential businesses, as of today, are, I believe the order takes effect tomorrow, the governor's order statewide. And I just have a list of what are called essential businesses here. And it's quite a long list, longer than I thought it would be. But if it's food processing and agriculture, you stay open. If it's fishing and aquaculture, you stay open. If it's industrial manufacturing, you stay open. Construction and maintenance of essential infrastructure, you stay working. Trash collection and transfer stations, we're open. Grocery, household goods, including convenience stores, forest products, essential home repair, hardware and auto repair, pharmacy and other medical, psychiatric, long-term care facilities, group homes and residential treatment facilities, biomedical, life science. I mean, the list is quite long. And you can go online and see what the declaration says and see that we're not closed down. People are still, in the essential services, are still working and helping out. But the non-essential, obviously retail stores and other establishments, restaurants, things like that, are closed. And it makes sense. It's difficult, but it makes sense. So that's all I wanted to add. Adjustments to the agenda, we have one. There's a Shellfish Management Ordinance Amendment. And I think we were all sent that amendment this afternoon. And I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Well, it's on 10-3.
On 10-3. No?
No, it is 10-3.
Yeah, it's already there.
Oh, you already have it, okay. Must have the one that was printed before then.
Is this when public comments are allowed?
Sorry?
Is this when public comments are allowed?
Next.
Next one.
Next.
Yeah.
So there's no adjustments?
I guess not.
No, it was already on, the updated one.
My apologies. Citizen, any other comments from us, the board here? Or the town manager here? Citizen comments? Yes, please state your name and where you live.
My name is Dawn Burns and I'm a resident on the Chatham group. But my frustration is for three years, I have asked to have online registrations available. And I keep getting what I feel is not correct information. So the first year, three years ago, I was told that it was going to cost the town $33,000. Second year, last year, when I approached Julie, I was told that it was too late for me to ask. And this time, I was just told that the budget committee had heard it and they felt that losing $28,000 was too much for this town. I do registrations. I also am, I do the books and everything. That is not a fair number. And I would like to know where that $28,000 number comes through. And I think that maybe it would be a good time for you guys to hear the truth. Online registrations do not cost the town a penny, not one penny. The town gets $5 for every registration, which was just up from three, just very, very recently. Out of that $5 per registration comes supplies, like printing supplies, printers, pens, everything that you use. And that's not counting that the average registration takes between five to 10 minutes, and this is on a reregistration, sometimes up to 15. If you take an employee's salary and what they make as far as their benefits and everything goes, that does not cover the $5 that we are making on a registration. I personally feel that it is a disservice to our residents not to be able to do this. There is absolutely zero cost to the town of Waldeboro, zero. If anything, it actually takes some of the burden off of the girls because it is less traffic. And honestly, I feel that if I don't want to come in here to register, I should be able to do it online.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Are there any other comments? Okay.
So to get that taken care of, what happens now? Because like I said, I've been being put off for three years.
We have your comment. Thank you. We're listening.
Okay.
Okay? But this is not an actionable item at this point. It's a comment that we've listened to.
Okay, that's why I was making sure, because I did ask to be put on the agenda.
Yep, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But bear in mind that when you asked, which was last Thursday, the agenda was already done and as you can see, it was very heavy. So it's not like we haven't heard you. And the $28,000 number that I gave you wasn't lost. That's what we put in the budget this year for all of it. I think we misunderstood each other on that.
Okay, so I work for four towns. Out of four towns, there are between five and 15 registrations per month that go through the online service. At $5 a person or a registration, that is $25 to $50 whatever a month. It is not a loss to the town. It is a disservice for us not to be able to have it.
And just so you know, I did email to find out from the, well, the state that on average, what is a town that has our number of registrations, what is there online? And I didn't get any response back. So that's where we're at with that. I didn't want you to think I forgot you, but been a little bit up to our.
It has been, but I've been asking for three years. And so, yes, this time when you said the budget committee blew it down, it did upset me because why does the budget committee have anything to do with it when it's not a service that costs the town money? So I'm sorry to come like this, but I figured after tonight, we would be closed down anyway, that we wouldn't have residents. And I keep getting told it's too late for the budget, or it's too late for the agenda, or it's too late for the town meeting, and I just don't find that fair.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Any other comments? Thank you. Select board comments. We'll start with Clint.
I would just like to say be safe out there and I've probably said that to everyone. I mean, I've really tried myself. I go out and do some shopping for people that shouldn't be out there. And I don't know, I'm not a lot younger myself, but I try to do what I can and be safe too. So be safe out there.
And you should only be shopping with one person, you don't take your whole family.
I don't take no one, just me.
Unless you're the only adult at home and you've got three kids.
I'm not an adult, but anyhow.
I would call somebody.
Yeah.
I guess I'm all set.
Well, it's really nice to see the kindness come out in some of our residents. I had a call today from someone who was just itching to do something to help. And I was able to, you know, would ask her to call a couple of different people and give her some ideas. But it's nice to see that people really do want to do, to help each other, like Clint was saying. The only negative I'd like to say is if I hear the world word elderly one more time.
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
I think I'm older than you are, but that's serious.
By a couple of months, I think. But no, it's not you, Bob, not at all. No. But I've not heard that word so much as I have in the last week or two. And then they keep defining it.
Oh, yeah. Define. I don't consider myself to be elderly.
I didn't know that over 60 was elderly.
Over 60?
Yes. That's what they're saying, over 60, you're considered elderly.
I'm with your definition, Bob. I'm with you on that one. But I felt fine until.
You didn't realize you're elderly.
So that's all.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple more things. One is the food bank is open.
It is.
And please follow their procedures. They're not allowing people in. I believe they're coming out and helping you, taking your order, getting what you need and bringing it to you. I understand the Lincoln County YMCA is closed, but they're still making wellness checks. They're making calls to all of the wise, sorry, senior members. And they're partnering with Healthy Lincoln County to provide meals to youth on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We've had a discussion about closing the town office, so we're not closing it, but we're modifying.
Modifying our hours.
Yeah, yeah. And that's all I had.
Ruben had a question. Did the franchise agreement get signed tonight?
It will.
Yes, it will.
Yes.
We've approved it.
Okay.
Is that the only one?
That's, well, yes, I've been giving updates so far and Ruben's the only one who asked a question.
Oh, we were expecting more questions.
Well, if anyone has any more questions.
Next thing up is the consent calendar.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Just wanted to point out that we do have a letter from Lincoln County giving us our tax commitment for fiscal year 2020. It's $697,391.33. And when I first saw that, I walked into Julie's office all excited because I thought it was going to blow our budget out of whack. And of course, it's got nothing to do with our budget. It's something we settled with the mill rate. But it is higher than we anticipated getting from them. I think we were looking at something more in the range of $665,000. So that's all I had on that. Any other comments on the consent calendar? Ready to vote? All in favor? Four, zero. Okay, new business. We've heard from Paul.
10-3.
10-3 is the shellfish ordinance revision.
Yep.
Do you want to explain it?
Yeah, I can.
It's your baby.
Yep. Yeah, I think, well, what it is, is we want to put a change in our shellfish ordinance to protect any conservation areas that we deem seed beds or the upwellers that we're building right now to have them protected. We've had a couple instances where we've done reseeding and it's been vandalized. And if anybody is caught vandalizing any of these places, that they be held accountable and they'll never be able to have a license in the town again. Because it's protecting the efforts of the harvesters that are doing the work in the town and protecting their livelihoods.
You're limiting the ordinance to harvesters, basically.
Yes.
What about people who go out there on a lark and tear up your stuff and there's a sign there that says, "Don't do this"?
I don't know how we can enforce that. We're talking about harvesters that have licenses so we could take them away. I don't know how we could charge them with vandalism, maybe?
Yep.
I think that would be a vandal, or a town warden could write them up for vandalism. But this goes to the, taking real teeth to the issue if we have one.
And this was not, this was the, just so we're clear, these were har, this was the harvesters in the audience who suggested this. This didn't come from the shellfish committee.
Yep.
The penalty, we were discussing the penalty and the idea of a lifetime ban was actually from the harvesters that were in the audience.
Tough on themselves, huh?
They are very tough on themselves.
Because they're putting the work in and if somebody's going to be down and destroy their work, then they're really upset about not being protected.
It's their livelihood.
It's, and sustainability.
Yep.
Yep, so.
Do you want to give an example of what happened?
We did a reseeding last fall, back in September, I think it was September 4th. And by October, November, all the nets that we had put down were gone. Somebody had gone in there and tore them up. We don't know who or how or what did it, but the stakes that marked out the areas were pulled up. So we know that there was issues there because the stakes that we marked for the closure, for the conservation closure, never got touched. But right where the nets were, almost all the stakes were pulled up and the nets were gone, ripped up. So somebody did something out there and people are pretty upset about it, the guys that did the work. Granted, they got paid for doing it through the grant, but they were still upset that they wouldn't spend all that time and it got destroyed.
Was it dug up or no?
No, they just ripped the nets out. And to get those nets out, you really have to work to get them out. So somebody did something.
So what we'd like you to do tonight is schedule a date for, you know, a public hearing on this.
On the language.
And what we could do is, as long as by April 11th, I believe it is, we just need.
Go to voters?
Yeah, we'll go to the voters. The reason we're pushing it so quickly is so that we can get it on for the June vote.
When would you like to schedule that here?
The first meeting in April.
First meeting in April.
I would move that.
Second? Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. So first meeting in April, we'll have a public hearing on the 2020 Town of Waldeboro Shellfish Order and Ordinance Amendment. All in favor? Four, zero.
Will there be people watching over?
They'll probably be watching. Ruben wants to.
Keep an eye on it. She making us cookies, is that what you said?
No, Ruben.
Ruben.
Oh, Ruben is. Oh, Ruben, you're a laughing heart. Oh, how nice.
The work remotely policy? Is Pega right?
No. Maybe it was the line. Oh, here it is. This one?
There's this one, and there's the one that's got all the red on it.
Yep. Yep, and.
So, that's the one I read, the one that was all red. I didn't have this because the packet was here.
Right.
Here's online, too.
This was printed afterward. I know Peg had a major concern with, well, there's a little history here. There was a sentence in there that said that the homeowner, that a remote worker, the telecommuter, is responsible liable if anything happens in the home as a result of work in the home. She crossed that out, and that got me to thinking. She's got, this person's working at home, telecommuting for the town, presumably with town equipment. And, sorry, the issue was third-party people visiting the house. If they got hurt or were injured while work was going on that related to the town in that location, it made, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it exempted the homeowner from any responsibility.
The language you had.
The original language.
Oh, okay.
So, I looked at that and said, "There's a liability issue here. How do we deal with this?" And what I suggested from Peg, and that's what's in this draft, was that their homeowner's policy provide coverage, that usually provides coverage anyway, for people who are visiting your house. So, if they get hurt, if they sue you, you've got coverage by your insurance policy. So, what I suggested was simply have your existing homeowner's policy name the town as an additional insured. There usually is no charge for this. I've never been charged for it. But it does give the homeowner protection. It would be under safety.
Safety, the last sentence.
Yeah, it's the last sentence under that paragraph regarding safety. And Peg was concerned about that. I think she said, "Well, what if people don't have insurance on their homes?"
Yes.
I suppose that's conceivable, but if you have a mortgage on your home, you're going to have to have insurance on it. So, the only situation where I can conceive that they wouldn't have insurance is if they don't have a mortgage. But what I thought then was, well, why don't we simply put in here something to the effect that if they're working at home, they're not going to have any visitors in the home for purposes of town business.
They shouldn't.
And they shouldn't.
Exactly.
Yep. Would that cover the problem?
Julie, what do you think? Honestly, the whole policy was designed so that in the event of a pandemic.
Some go air.
Somebody could, and it really applies to one employee. And it was trying to give us some, I don't want people thinking everybody can work remotely from home.
And it doesn't seem.
I just want somebody to be able to take home a laptop and do work that is essential to provide service to the town of Waldeboro, which I probably could have just said, "Take it home." And then Peg gave me this policy.
I got into the policy.
And now we are into the policy.
What do you suggest to make it simple?
To make it simple, at this point, to be very honest with you, because I would just like to be able to tell somebody that you can take your computer home. Our IT people have assured us that there's no, there's no issues, I, you know.
What about stuff they take home from, I mean, she put this together, so I'm going to comment on it.
I understand, and I'm regretting it now.
There's equipment that we supply, and there's a requirement to write down what they're taking home so that we know where it is.
Just like any other department that you sign out, that you have equipment, we have a simple sign-out sheet, decide you're responsible for it. I think I'd rather do that than have the formal policy, to be honest.
What about the Public Works? I know John takes his truck home, so.
Only during snowstorms and things like that, not every day.
So, oh, no.
We don't have, other than the police department, we do not have a vehicle that goes home and has the duty.
I thought he always had it home with him.
Yeah, but like you do, I mean.
Because he's pretty much on duty 24 hours a day regardless.
Yeah, I mean, I have my own private computer. I don't have access to the network from home remotely, but I use that for work. I, you know, I, we can rework this and make it much simpler. I mean, we took something because it was trying to get it onto the agenda, and we thought, "Let's have it." We took it right from an HR source, changed what we needed to change, but it got very complicated. So, I think, and rightfully so, that some of this has things that nobody's going to come to her house or anybody's house to do business for the town. So, it's simply just being able to take the computer home, so.
Well, I didn't, when I looked at the last line, "The employee is liable for any injuries sustained by visitors to his or her home worksite."
That was the original. That was the original.
That's what I'm looking, that's the only one I have here.
Why don't we just take that out?
Why don't we just take it out?
Saying no, no, no one.
Do we even need it?
The employee should not conduct business at home.
Well, it doesn't even say the employee is conducting business.
The employees show lots of conductors in town.
Yeah, and then they don't need to have.
Do we really need this?
Can we just take that line out?
Do we really need this?
Honestly, I would just use what everybody other town, every other department uses when you sign out a piece of equipment.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, that way it's not.
Okay.
It's not handcuffing anybody.
It's not handcuffing anybody. And we've, we have an email, because we asked the question, because it came up the other day, was what is our, you know, what is, our IT system's good? Our IT guys have done everything.
We leave it alone, it allows you the flexibility to do something.
Well, this is really funny, though, the way it reads, "The employee's liable for any injuries sustained by visitors," so a visitor's going to come and hurt somebody?
Well, maybe, maybe they might trip over something. I don't, that's more for private sector, I would say, than public, but.
Yeah, but it just.
It was Peg, Peg initiated it because she wanted to do the HR thing.
Whatever.
Yeah, well, that's good.
But I'm with you on this. I don't think there's any reason, you're talking basically about.
Just ask that we scratched.
So, just do what you do.
Okay. We'll do what we do.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay, so there's no action on that.
Nope.
Nope.
Water Department Advisory Committee. And the motion would be to establish a water advisory, sorry, a water department advisory committee that would meet with Main Water quarterly to discuss and make recommendations to the select board concerning operating capital budgets, water rates, future expansion of the water system, security, contractual matters, and any other issues the committee members and Main Water deem necessary.
Makes sense.
That's the best commission of the committee.
You need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Some move.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Four zero. And then the next step is to appoint members to the Water Department Advisory Committee. And we have five folks, three of them current on the committee, the old committee. That would be Arvin Rowan, Michael Thayer, and Dahlia Moley. And then two new ones. Jeff McNelly has agreed to serve, and Carlton Johnson has applied and is highly recommended as a member. And Jeff McNelly is on the utility district. He's been to water meetings, but because of a potential conflict at the time, he didn't become an official member of that committee. Boy, does he know his stuff.
That's his business, that was his career. He's retired, though, isn't he?
He just retired.
I thought he just retired, yeah.
He's worked with the PUC.
Yeah.
So, that's why he couldn't actually be an official member of the committee.
So, perfect.
I would move for that committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion of those five folks? All in favor? Great. And we have one applicant to the Marijuana Committee, Susan Swed. We've interviewed her. Katie and I and Julie talked to her. And she's interested, she'd like to serve. So, and we need another member on that committee. I think they're down to four now.
You want a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I would move.
Second.
Any further discussion about Susan? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Old business, personnel policy, eleven point one. The policy we have has been with us since January 28th. I don't think there have been any comments about it. So, I would entertain a motion to accept the policy as drafted and as it's here in our packet on the 20th of January.
I have a, oh, we can do a motion, I have a question on it.
Some move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, yep.
I was just curious why budget in here is capitalized throughout.
No idea.
It just, it just looked funny. A couple of places, I wondered if.
Is it a defined term?
No, I don't believe so. But the other things are, you know, board, manager, town, those are capitalized, and you see good reason for that. But budget, and it.
We can fix that.
Oh, it just popped up a couple of times, and I didn't know if I was missing something.
The budget?
I don't think you are.
I, the word budget, no, not budget, sorry, benefits.
Ah, benefits.
Is that?
Is it a defined term?
Is that why? And then it just looked very strange.
Oh, okay, benefits, yeah.
That it was capitalized. Yeah, it is.
Benefits is a defined term.
Yeah.
And that explains why it's.
Okay, it looked funny because it was in the middle of other things, like employment and compensation and those kinds of things that aren't. Now, I had one other, there was something. You could tell this was put together by different people. You could, you can see the difference. People have different styles. I could see the, I could see the different styles in there. Oh, I know, this was one, and it's probably something minor, you can tell me. We refer to, oh, elected, there are two things, elected members of boards.
That would be the Budget Committee Select Board.
Okay, all right, it doesn't, member of boards or committees, but it doesn't talk about appointed members.
Well, if you're a member of a board and you're not elected, you're appointed.
Right, but it. It just, it was just.
Can I read the sentence?
Yeah, it was just a couple of times. Oh, and officials, who are officials? That came out the law in the latter part of that. I just wasn't sure who the officials are.
An elected official means any person the voters of the town elect by popular vote to fill a town position, or whose replacement the board appoints because of resignation, death, or.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that part, but it, when it comes up later, it didn't seem to make as much sense.
Do you guys wear identification tags? Some do. EMS wears identification tags. So does, the fire department has them now, and the police department. We do not in the office.
Well, I hadn't noticed in here, but I read then.
We could, we have the capability, because we now, we now make, we now have the capability of making our own identification.
Yep.
How come I can't speak? Identification tags.
Yeah, it makes sense to do that if you.
Yeah, well, you probably have them, it says they make them. But I didn't know, I just read that and thought, huh, I haven't seen those guys wear them. Yeah, I think it was in places like cooperation and teamwork by all employees, officials, and volunteers. There's two different places that talked about officials.
So, did you want to, I think, what would you like to change that to?
No, I didn't know, I was curious who the officials are. We have the volunteers, and then we have the elected people, and then we have officials.
I would consider myself an elected, I mean, an official. I'm an official, but I'm not elected.
No.
And then just the date.
We'll change the date.
Yeah, no, that was good.
Any further discussion? Did everybody look at the attachment on the back with those ranges?
I don't have an attachment.
It's the attachment one to the policy. Those were sent out on the 2nd of February.
I just use paper copies.
That's the same, those are the same ranges that we discussed by the Budget Committee.
We've seen the ranges.
Yep.
On a separate piece. Yeah.
Okay, so it's just understood that the policy we're approving includes attachment one, compensation ranges.
Yeah, mentions it in there.
And that that's reviewed annually by the select board and whomever, our personnel, yep.
That's in there.
Okay, that is understood, good. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor? Thank you. And boards and commissions policy?
Look, you've got all the new ones on here.
I put all the new ones on.
Yeah, gonna need another page pretty soon.
Well, I was hoping you guys approved the Water Committee tonight, or I was going to have to take that out.
Do you need a motion on this?
Yeah.
I thought we had it.
No, we hadn't done it.
Is it something different? Just because you've added different?
We've added different things, and we, remember, this was the discussion, it was very lengthy before, now we got it down to two pages back and front, four. We went from like ten to four pages.
Yeah, we did good with that.
I thought we did, yeah, I thought we.
Yeah, I like to keep it short.
The one thing we don't have in that policy, and we probably ought to think about adding it, is a reference to the Personnel Manual, which that contains the ethics clause. And that Personnel Manual makes everybody, including volunteers, subject to the ethics clause in the manual.
Or we could just give them a manual when we give them the policy.
Right, we give, this should be given to every new person.
Well, we do refer in there to the Freedom of Information Act.
Yep.
We require them to look at that online, so.
Yeah.
I would think that we could just add a paragraph to the end or a sentence saying, "You're also expected to review the Personnel Policy Manual, and particularly section, whatever section it is that deals with ethics."
How about just each board member shall receive a copy of this policy and the Personnel Policy in appointment?
Yeah, that works.
Works.
Then we just hand it to them and.
Yep.
Yep.
Good.
The only other thing, the Transfer Station Management Committee actually appoints the Transfer Station Committee. I think it's on the upper part of that last page.
Okay.
And do we refer that?
I don't, we don't, we don't put who appoints it.
Sorry?
It doesn't say who appoints it. It says, "Membership term, general plan, solid waste management."
Okay.
It doesn't say who appoints it.
That's as long as it's clear, fine, good. That works. So, the motion is to accept.
Do you need a motion on that?
Policy as amended with that reference to the ethics, to the Personnel Policy Manual. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Four zero, thank you. Wow. Getting a lot done. The next meeting's agenda, I believe Vax is going to talk to us about the transportation survey results.
I told you to add one and I spoke with Julie about it yesterday.
Yes, you did, the warrant articles for the June 4th vote. And that would be, we should do that at the next meeting, shouldn't we?
And the.
Yes, it would be.
And, and I don't know how you want to list it, but something about people concerned about their second bill and their taxes and blah, blah, blah.
I was going to talk about that in my town manager report, but.
But I have that also as an, as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Given us of late real estate tax payments or extensions of time.
Well, I spoke to you about it and Julie about it.
You did, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm good.
I think by the next meeting, we'll have a better idea of where we're headed.
Right.
Because I would like to have a little bit of time to talk about just that and the budget and maybe changing some revenue numbers. That's, that's my only concern at this point is revenue numbers.
Yep. So anything else you'd like to?
Now, the warrant that we go over for the June, when is that? We have a date, it's in our budget book.
Well, the public, the public hearing is in May.
May, okay.
But we can get the warrant drafted and go through it and set a date for that.
Right, she'll be, that will be on your next agenda, Jody will be working on that.
Oh, good, is the fireworks ordinance in that, going to be in that?
I believe the fireworks ordinance will be in that, there's, there's quite a bit on there.
Yeah, we need, we need to do a good job about explaining to the public what, what the ramifications are, what they mean, see.
I really think, and I, and remember the big question, and Glenn Melvin brought it up, was remember with the shellfish where we could add a little something?
Yes, that's.
It's not taxpayer.
Tax supported.
Correct, they did say there was a little bit of leeway of what we could, we can't go for or against it, but you can add an explanation and I think maybe we could should consider stuff and.
Yeah, we should do that.
Yeah, so we don't run into the same issue.
Because I find that even with some of these numbers that we put on that, because Jody, so Jody comes from another community. Some of what we have, especially with the transfer station, transfers in and transfers out, when she was going through that, she found that confusing. And I imagine there are people in town who find that confusing.
Yeah.
Confusing too, that maybe we could add just a little blurb.
Say what it means.
And say what it means. This is Waldeboro shares.
Simple speak.
Simple speak, yeah.
Yeah.
So we might want to, I'll try to get that to you sooner rather than later so you can add your comments to it.
Okay, is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up before we go into executive session? Okay, I guess there's a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRS 8056F as Frank, as Field Book Fund trustees to discuss applications. Is there a second to that motion?
So move.
Okay, all in favor? All right, we're in executive session.